Hi, how are you?
Good evening, everybody. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is now called to order. Please note that we will be going into executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss personnel matters. I'll now read the usual public notice. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs, at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. I'd like now to request that everyone take a moment to mute their cellphones or handheld devices; it's greatly appreciated. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream, providing service worldwide via personal computers and mobile devices. Public sessions of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. Let me start out by congratulating our new vice chair, Barry Schwartz, who was recently appointed by Governor Andrew Cuomo as our vice chairperson. Barry, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And on behalf of everyone here tonight, warmest congratulations to the new mom, trustee Myra Lenares Garcia, on the birth of her beautiful daughter, Abigail. Let me also take this opportunity to express on behalf of the Board of Trustees our deepest appreciation to President Jeremy Travis, who announced yesterday that he will be stepping down on August 1st as president following 13 years of outstanding service to John Jay College and to CUNY. And I know that the Chancellor will wish to express and speak about your exemplary work. There'll be an ample opportunity in the coming semester for all of us to extend our gratitude, but on behalf of everyone here tonight, thank you for a job very, very, very well done. Thank you, sir. On behalf of the Board also, where is our student? I'll skip this for a second, just so I don't embarrass them, but also let me report that the Board held its budget and public hearing on the Board calendar on Wednesday, October 19th, 2016. Vice Chairperson Barry Schwartz chaired the hearing, which was also attended by myself; trustees Una Clark and Sandra Wilkin; University Faculty Chair and Faculty Trustee Kay Conway; and University Student Senate Chair and Trustee Chica Oneyjikuwa; and members of the Chancellery. A summary of the proceedings have been circulated to the trustees and the Chancellor's Cabinet, and a transcript is available in the office of the Secretary. Also, we mourn the untimely passing of Kenneth P. Thompson, who passed away on October 9th, was a distinguished graduate of John Jay College of Criminal Justice. As all of you know, Ken was the Brooklyn District Attorney and earned a reputation in a short period of time as one of our nation's most progressive district attorneys. He blesses us all with his unwavering commitment to justice and his unrivalled pursuit of a fairer system for all whom he served. I know that the college is in touch with his family regarding an appropriate way to memorialize his legacy. He was a wonderful human being and will be sadly sorely missed. Let me now call on trustee Fernando Ferrer to announce college and faculty honors. Mr. Trustee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Baruch College was recently ranked the number-two safest large college in America by College Choice. Congratulations.
Mr. Ferrer, could you move the microphone a little closer to you? Thank you.
Thank you. Hunter College Women and Gender Studies Program Director Ru Palozza received a fellowship from the American Institute of Indian Studies to support her research on the relationship between sexual assault, caste, and land in Hariana, India. Congratulations. City College Distinguished Professor of Science and Engineering Robert R. Alfano is the 2016 recipient of the Optical Society of America's Michael S. Feld BioPhotonics Award, which recognizes innovative and influential contributions to the field of bio-photonics. In addition, City College Professor George John was made a Fellow of the Royal Society of Chemistry, the world's leading community of scientists in that field. Congratulations. Brooklyn College Computer and Information Science Professor Ning Fa Shu; programmer Jonathan Fruman; and graduate student Ji May recently won the $10,000 Top Prize at New York City Media Lab Summit. They created PCAT, a declarative programming language that can be used for general-purpose applications, including scripting, modeling, and symbolic computations. Congratulations. A CUNY-affiliated nanotechnology company developed by College of Staten Island and Graduate Center Professor Zaglul Ahmed won the Universal Biotech Innovation Prize in a global competition that offers a glimpse of the future of science. Congratulations. A number of faculty award recipients are featured in the new edition of Salute to Scholars, which is available at the table. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me now call on trustee Una Clark to announce student and alumni honors.
Mr. Chairman.
What about you, Una?
Now I have two for the price of one.
The better to hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brooklyn College MFA class of 1989 alumnus Paul Beatty's novel, The Sellout, won the Man Booker Prize yesterday, marking the first time an American writer has won this award. The judges were unanimous in their decision, citing the novel's inventive comic approach to a thorny issue of racial identity and injustice. Congratulations. Your college student Clinton Eden had a six-week internship at Yale Medical School last summer, a junior now. He's just 18 years old with a 4.0 GPA in his major. John Rodeman, an accelerated second-degree student in nursing at Hunter College, received $5,000 award from the American Assembly for Men in Nursing, Johnson &amp; Johnson Scholarship. WNYC Radio featured seven Baruch students in an online video, what does it mean to be an American now? That has attracted over 129,000 views. Congratulations. City College alumna Yvonne Eng, a 2016 MFA graduate, won the silver medal at this year's Student Academy Awards competition in alternative category. Her thesis, a short film titled Gould Kuma, which is about the survivors of Hiroshima atomic bomb, and her daughter. The competition included 1,749 submissions from around the world. Congratulations. That's the end of my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. A list of grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to the September 26, 2016 meeting is available around the table and in the trustees' meeting books. Let me now call on Chancellor James B. Milliken to present an update of recent activity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. There's always important business at each meeting of the Board of Trustees, but perhaps none is more important than the meeting where the Board adopts an annual budget request. Successful budget requests are guides to an organization's goals and strategies, and the CUNY budget request the Board will consider tonight is no exception. It will be the basis of our discussions over the months ahead with our partners in state and city government. It reflects our priorities for educating hundreds of thousands of students, supporting their success, and helping them launch the careers that will uplift their families in the city and state. That put very succinctly is what our budget is about. It is designed with much thought to advance our priorities on behalf of the many CUNY students. CUNY's goals and initiatives were laid out in our four-year master plan, approved earlier by this Board after months of public discussion. That's our blueprint and presents what we need to achieve for our students and our stakeholders, and how we intend to accomplish our goals. The plan is an exciting one and will lead to what we believe will be a transformation of our university. We call the plan Connected CUNY because it envisions a new level of integration between our colleges and between the university and the outside institutions that we work with. These collaborations and partnerships will allow us to get more from our resources and our educational assets. The beneficiaries will be our students. The fundamental objectives of the master plan, which the budget is designed to advance, are expanding access to higher education in New York City, improving student success in the form of higher graduation and retention rates, creating more experiences, such as internships, that will improve the career prospects for our graduates. We're already seeing the benefits of our programs in advancing what I believe are the urgent tasks ahead of us. The knowledge-based economy is demanding, and it offers wonderful careers to those who are prepared, and CUNY's graduates will be increasingly well-prepared. So for the first time, working with the Board of Trustees, we've developed a four-year financial plan to support the four-year master plan. The financing plan includes requests for additional funding from the state and the city, but also includes reallocation from CUNY funds to support highest priorities, as well as new emphasis on private philanthropy. And in keeping with the Connected CUNY theme, it contemplates strategic partnerships with other institutions to leverage our investments to better serve our students and New York. We look forward to taking time with our elected leaders to share our priorities and explain how this budget will provide a significant investment in a prosperous future for New As the chairman indicated, I have a word or two to say about one of our presidents. It is with decidedly mixed feelings that I mention again the announcement of our friend and colleague, President Jeremy Travis of John Jay College, that he will be stepping down at the end of this academic year. We'll announce a search committee soon, and I expect we will consider many strong candidates for a job in large measure because Jeremy's impressive accomplishments have made this job even more attractive. President Travis has transformed John Jay, expanding its offerings and deepening its quality. The college, always an important resource for the city and state, has only increased in importance as an essential contributor to public safety and indeed to justice because of Jeremy's vision and leadership. He's been a great friend and colleague to all of us, always generous with guidance and support, and while he will be missed in the role that we've become accustomed to, we take some comfort knowing that he will remain at CUNY, where he will continue his pioneering work at this significant moment when prison reform, justice reform, police reform are bipartisan issues. Thank you for your service, Jeremy, and best wishes for your future work. That's the last time we're going to talk about this today.
Thank you.
I want to update our Board on our work at City College of New York. While we had, well, first of all, I want to thank Dr. Mary Driscoll, who is with us this evening, the interim provost, for agreeing to serve at City College as administrator in charge. No one will be happier than Mary when we name an interim president and embark on a search for new permanent leadership. While we had originally expected to name an interim president today, I now expect the appointment to happen in the very near future. This is an important moment for City College, and I have been taking this opportunity to consult widely with faculty, students, alumni, donors, and supporters of City College, discussing the state of the college and thoughts on its future leadership. This has been time very well spent for me. It's been reassuring and energizing to experience the passion and commitment that so many people have for City College, not only passion about its wonderful history, but more importantly about the bright future that they envision for City College. We will see to it that City College enjoys a bright future, and I have no doubt, given the support, the commitment, and the passion that I have witnessed over these last several weeks, that it will. So in addition to naming an interim president soon, we will also soon announce the membership of a search committee to search for a permanent president. I'm pleased to report that Chairman Thompson has asked Vice Chairperson Schwartz to lead the search committee, and he has agreed to do that. Finally, as many of you know, November is CUNY Month by proclamation of the governor and the mayor, so keep your eyes open for special events, promotions, and messages regarding the role of this extraordinary institution. And perhaps most important in the month of November is the focus that all of our institutions have on young people visiting, learning more about CUNY, about college, and the opportunities that it provides. And for the first time this year, extended to seventh graders in New York to visit our campuses and learn what they can about CUNY. So we're looking forward to this exciting period of the year, and, Mr. Chairman, that is my report.
Thank you, Chancellor. One thing before we move on, let me note our student trustee Chico Oneyjikuwa has joined us, and she has just been elected as the Student Senate Chairperson on October 21st. So congratulations. We're looking forward to working with her. Item number one, Chancellor's University Report for September 26, 2016, including addenda and errata sections. You'll find a copy of the Chancellor's University Report for September 26, 2016, including its addendum and errata sections, on the table. Can I have a second on this? Or then can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the Chancellor's University Report for October 26, 2016? Okay, can I have a vote to approve the report? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? It's approved. Item number two, approval of the minutes of the regular Board meeting of September 26, 2016. You'll find a copy of the draft minutes for the September 26, 2016 Board meeting in your meeting books. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Are there any discussion on the minutes? Corrections, changes?
No.
A vote to approve the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That's approved. Item number three, the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Let me call on Committee of Fiscal Affairs Chair Barry Schwartz to present the following items. Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I give the report, I just want to underscore one thing that Chancellor said to us, which I think we all know, which is this is an extraordinary institution. I couldn't help but note the date of the award of a Master of Fine Arts degree from Brooklyn College to the first-time American writer winner of the Man Booker Prize. That was 1989, when this was an institution adrift. And just think, in 1989, we created an alumnus like that, and what we can do here each and every day. Having said that, I will now turn to the business at hand, which is the report of the work, the good work, and lots of work of the Fiscal Affairs Committee. I'm reporting on two meetings. We met on October 5 and we met on October 24. October 5, we dealt with Calendar Item 3A, the explanation of which is in your materials at your desk, and we're asking for a resolution authorizing Hunter College to purchase audio-visual equipment and integration from a firm under two existing contracts. Hunter, as many of you may know, is upgrading the technology in its library and will be converting mostly archival space into a state-of-the-art success hub. President Rabb joined us at the meeting and answered questions from the committee, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3A.
At this point, there's a motion?
So moved.
Seconded? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion's approved. That's Item 3A.
The next policy item on our agenda tonight is 3B, which is consideration of the fiscal year 2017, 2018 operating budget request. This was discussed at both of our meetings, initially presented by Senior Vice Chancellor Sapienza, and after a long and fruitful discussion at that first meeting, we agreed that we needed further information and further conversation amongst ourselves before we would bring this to you for a vote tonight. I'd like to particularly thank not just the members of the committee, but most importantly, the vice chair of the committee, trustee Farrar, and also trustee Mujica, for the extraordinary effort and work that they put into the report, which you'll soon hear from Senior Vice Chancellor Sapienza, and I'd like to thank him as well as our senior advisor, Mark Shaw, for the work and the help they gave to our committee to vote, as we did, five in favor. Our student member was opposed, and one of our trustee members has abstained. Having said that, I'd like to turn to Senior Vice Chancellor Sapienza for his report, and then we'll hear something from the Chancellor before I ask for the resolution to be approved.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schwartz, and good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
You have in front of you a presentation, Operating Budget Request, that we're going to go through today. The resolution has been shared with all of you, as has the actual budget request document. Rather than go through the document itself, we're going to go through the presentation, which summarizes it and has a lot of key elements that will help understand what we're presenting tonight. So before we get into the actual numbers and assumptions behind the request, I'm just going to call on the Chancellor to talk about some of the high-level challenges we're facing as we put this request together. So Chancellor, thank you.
Thank you. This is the first time I've ever had a vice chancellor call on me. Let's not make this a pattern. I actually just want to, I said much of what I wanted to say about this during my opening remarks about the budget, and I'll turn it back to Matt in about 30 seconds. But I do want to emphasize this one point again, and trustee Schwartz also emphasized this. I think this has been a special new beginning with CUNY and a sort of new set of processes with regard to our budget request. So for the first time that I'm aware of, taking a very important state document, the four-year master plan, and then developing a four-year outlooking financial plan. It says, "Over this period of time, we are going to try to use these resources from a number of different sources to achieve our objectives." So it's an important statement about our goals, our priorities, our strategies, and an important statement about how we will get there, with a combination of state funding, of city funding, of reallocated funding from redesigned business processes and finding efficiencies, a new emphasis on philanthropy to continually support more of our activities so we can do more for our students. I think this is an important process, and this budget request now represents the first year in that four-year plan. And so I think the committee in particular, this Board, and the senior leadership that worked on this can take some satisfaction in this document and a process which I think will be a positive one for the future.
Thanks, Chancellor. So I'm going to go through the presentation, and at the end of the presentation, more than happy to answer any questions or listen to any concerns that any of you may have. So on page two, as the Chancellor mentioned, this year's request is modeled after the university's master plan, which was approved by the Board at the September meeting. So that's the blueprint for a budget request this year. And as the Chancellor just mentioned, for the first time, we're including a four-year financial plan tied directly into the master plan. So this is a multi-year plan that's being submitted for you tonight. On the next page, page three, the current economic environment. I think, as you all know, we're facing some financial challenges in both the short term and the long term, but having said that, we still need to do the things that are necessary in order to move the university along and provide the services that our students need. So on page four, some of those long-term and short-term needs that we have are summarized for you on this table, unfunded mandatory needs. We have costs that we're going to be facing over the next four years that are built into contractual and mandatory costs. So the first item there, unfunded cost of current collective bargaining agreements. I think, as you all know, we have agreed on new contracts with most of our unions. There are unfunded costs beginning in next year, $68 million in 2018. That's going to grow by another $9 million in 2019. We have sufficient funding to cover the retroactive components of the collective bargaining increases and cover the costs in the current year, but there are out-year costs that need to be covered. The next item, projected new labor costs. We wanted to show the trustees what potentially new labor costs could be. Although we have recent collective bargaining agreements, most of them do expire within the next year, and what the numbers you see on the page there, on slide four, represent what a 2% collective bargaining increase would be for all of our unionized employees. So as you know, we follow pattern bargaining from the state and city, so using 2% is just really to show you what the impact could be of an increase like that. And so that are costs that we are going to incur in the out-years. And then the last item, other mandatory costs, are things that we have every year, increases for fringe benefits, for health insurance, pension liabilities, salary step increments that are, again, built into our contract with our faculty union, building rentals, and the like. And so you could see the total unfunded mandatory needs that we have currently for the next four years. On page five, one of the other things that is very important to know when evaluating a financial plan are what are the out-year gaps for our funding partners at the state and city. And so those are summarized on page five for the current year and the next three years. So in the current year, the state and city both have balanced financial plans, which is terrific, and you see the out-year gaps that the state and city have reported for their financial plans in the next three years. The state gaps are very small, although they are gaps, they are very small, and certainly when you consider the fact that just a few short years ago, the state was looking at gaps up to $16 billion. The fact that they are under $2 billion is a great credit to the good work that's being done at the state level in managing the finances. On the city side, there are gaps as well. They're all under $3 billion a year, and so while there are funding shortfalls in the state and city's financial plan, these are gaps that we feel are manageable for both the state and the city. On the next page, page six, we wanted to give some context to the trustees before we get into what our actual request is, and that context is, we wanted to ensure you that our colleges and our managers at the university level are being fiscally responsible. We're not coming to you with a request for more money because we need to cover up for spending that shouldn't have occurred. We are being fiscally responsible. And so this chart on page six shows our spending for the last four years on the state side, and this data comes directly from the state's accounting system, the statewide financial system. And so you could see from fiscal '13 to fiscal '16, the changes that have occurred. And so on average, over those three years, the annual average increase has been 1.85%. And so by year and by category, whether it's personal service or other than personal service, the numbers vary from year to year, but overall, our colleges have been extremely responsible, and this includes the increases that we've had in mandatory costs for fringe benefits and for contractual salary increases. So even with those higher costs, we've still kept spending at an average of less than 2% per year. And keeping with that theme on page seven... And keeping with that theme, on page seven, we have instituted an administrative efficiency program, which we're going to talk a little bit more about in just a couple of minutes. In fiscal '16, we had university-wide efficiency savings of $51.3 million at both the senior colleges and at the system office level. And in fiscal '17, our target to save is $36.6 million, which includes, again, the senior colleges, system office, and also the community colleges who have an efficiency target for this year. So over those two years, '16 and the current year '17, we're projected to save $88 million.
These are recurring savings?
Yes, $88 million in recurring savings. So on slide eight, start to get into our request and our multi-year action plan. And so we've developed a multi-year action plan, a four-year plan to tie into our master plan. It calls for additional support from the state and city to fund the priorities in our strategic plan and to cover our mandatory needs. CUNY is committed to implementing and further ramping up this administrative efficiency plan that we started last year to leverage state and city support. And also calls for tuition increases and extension, but a modification to the predictable tuition On page nine, you see a summary of that four-year plan by both sources and uses.
Sir, I'm going to have to remove you if you don't stop. So please sit down and allow the meeting to continue. Thank you.
Page eight has a summary of the four-year plan, broken up by sources and uses for each year. And I'm going to spend some time going through the components of the sources and uses of our plan. And I'll start with the uses and talk about the strategic framework investments that begin on page 10. So one of the major master plan categories that we want to invest in are faculty and academic program investments. And the next few slides have call-out quotes from our actual request documents. And the request document has a lot more detail on what we're actually targeting for investment. But just to give some highlights, on faculty and academic program investment, we want to continue to hire additional full-time faculty. And we also want to make sure that we're making investments in retaining the outstanding faculty we have and promoting a more diverse faculty. So that's a big part of our master plan and of this request. We also want to continue to leverage research opportunities for our faculty and create partnerships with other universities, the Chancellor mentioned in his remarks earlier, outside organizations, and with the private sector. On page 11, the next category we have is expanding access and improving college preparation. One of the new programs that we're really excited about is called CUNY Connects, in which CUNY students will be hired as peer mentors in the New York City public schools to work with 11th and 12th grade students. For the most part, students will be targeted to work in the high school from which they graduated or in the neighborhood from which they live. So we're excited about that program and building those partnerships with the high schools. We also want to significantly ramp up our online instruction to provide expanded access to our current students, and also try to attract those students who may not otherwise enroll in higher education, like adult students. We think online is a way to attract more adult students, bring those folks in, the hundreds of thousands of adult students in New York State that have some college credits but have not yet obtained a degree, to try to bring them back into the higher education arena. On page 12, our next category, sharply increased student graduation rates and improved career preparation. Lot of the great things that we've learned from the successful ASAP program, we want to apply to other areas of the university, want to provide more academic advisement. We want to do that not only through hiring additional advisors for our campuses, but also to take advantage of available technology to improve advisement for our students. And we also want to strengthen connections with employers so that we can build on experiential learning opportunities for our students and to provide more internships. And lastly, preparing CUNY students for the global marketplace. We want to improve the global competencies in our curriculum for our students. We want to create more scholarship funds so our students will have more study abroad opportunities. And we want to bring more international students to our CUNY colleges. So those are the master plan opportunities that we want to invest in as part of this budget request. But we have some other strategic investments that I'd like to talk about. And one of them is a student affordability initiative called Bridge to Completion. And the New York State Tuition Assistance Program, the TAP program, when you look at the higher education financial aid programs throughout this country that other states provide, TAP is really one of the best ones that are out there. But there are some limitations to TAP, and there are some things that we think TAP could be improved on. And one of the limitations is that it is only for eight semesters. And so many of our students, due to family and work obligations, it's very difficult for them to graduate within eight semesters, especially for those students that start at a community college and obtain associate's degree and then transfer into a bachelor's program. So we want to do something for those students who max out on their TAP eligibility. And so what we're proposing with this Bridge to Completion program is that students who are in good academic and financial standing and who are within 30 credits of graduation but lose their TAP eligibility, that we would provide funding for financial support for them for up to two semesters so that they can continue to persist towards their degree. We project that this will cost us about $17.5 million a year, and this is part of our request for fiscal '18. And we're very excited about this initiative to help not only improve graduation rates, but to help students with affording to continue their.
How many students does that possibly affect?
We project that it'll affect over 4,000 students. So we talked about some of the good investments that we want to make, but, as we mentioned earlier, we also have some mandatory needs that we're going to need to cover for next year. And on page 15, you can see the breakout of those mandatory costs by senior college and community college and by category. And so you see the big item there is fringe benefits, which is usually the item that takes up most of the mandatory needs asked. The biggest components of fringe benefits are health insurance increases and pension liabilities. We also have building rentals and contractual salary increments as well, going forward for a total need of $55.8 million for mandatory costs for next year. So on page 16, we get into the next part of this presentation, which is, how are we proposing to finance these strategic investments and these mandatory needs? And we have five major components that we are proposing on how to cover these needs. One is a state-based increase for our community colleges. Two is additional New York City support for the senior colleges. The third is the funding of mandatory needs from the state and city. The fourth is the CUNY Administrative Efficiencies Program. And the fifth is the extension and modification of the predictable tuition policy. And I'm going to spend a little time going through each of these five categories. So on page 17, the community college base aid increase. We are requesting a three-year commitment from the state for community college funding, a base aid increase of $250 per student for each of the next three years. The current base aid level is a shade under $2,700 per student. It's $2,697. We've had four straight years of base aid increases, and we're very grateful to the governor and to the legislature for including that in the last four years in the state budget. But when you compare where we are in the current year to where we were in 2009, we're only slightly above where we were in 2009. And so post-recession, we had four straight years of base aid decreases. And the last four years of increases have not made up for those when you include inflationary increases. When you look at where we were in 2009 and apply inflation, we're actually $382 per student below where we should be. And so we're requesting a $250 increase for each of the next three years to help stabilize community college operations, but more importantly, allow for investments in student success at our community colleges. On page 18, the next component as part of our funding strategy is requesting additional New York City support for the senior colleges. And this is the first time that we're including this in our budget request. The City of New York has been very supportive of our community colleges the last several years, and we're greatly appreciative of that. But the funding for our senior colleges has been stagnant at $32.3 million for the last 22 years. Since 1995, funding for CUNY senior colleges from the City of New York has remained flat at $32.3 million. And if you would apply a higher education pricing index to that from that 1995 base, we should be at around $60 million. And so we're requesting $28 million to bring that up to where it should be today. We're also asking for an additional $20 million for senior college operating support from New York City. And there's two other components of our ask from the city for the senior colleges that I want to spend a couple of minutes on. One is something that we're calling Faculty Partnership for Student Success Initiative. And we're requesting $35 million for that initiative. When we announced our collective bargaining agreement with the Professional Staff Congress back in June, part of that agreement included a commitment from both the union and the university that we would work together as part of the next round of bargaining to find a way that we can reduce the faculty workload by three hours. Current faculty workload contractually is 27 hours for a community college faculty, 21 hours for a senior college faculty. We had our first Labor Management Committee meeting that was convened in order to talk about this issue and how we're going to get there as part of the next round of bargaining. But we're very excited about the possibility of getting there because by reducing the workload for three hours, it'll enable our faculty to have more office hours so that students can spend more time one-on-one with the faculty, have more advisement, more mentoring for our students, provide for more research opportunity for our faculty. So it's a good thing for our faculty. It's a great thing for our students to have more time with the faculty. And we're really excited about this initiative and that partnership with the faculty and the students. The other item that we're asking for from the city is $10 million to help cover what we call the TAP gap. As part of state legislation that was passed in 2011, CUNY and SUNY must cover the difference between their tuition and the maximum TAP award. For our community colleges, it's not an issue because we're below the maximum TAP award. For our senior colleges, the annual resident rate is $6,330. The maximum TAP award is $5,165. And so that gap, because of that gap, it diverts about $51 million in tuition revenue that we have to set aside every year to cover that gap. And so we're asking the City of New York for $10 million next year to help us close that gap as part of a multi-year plan to bring that gap closer so that we can make additional investments in our senior colleges. Page 19, the Administrative Efficiencies Program that we implemented last year that I talked about at the beginning of the presentation. We're going to build on that. As you all know, we have engaged an outside organizational expert, McKinsey &amp; Company, to help us build on this effort. We're focusing on business process redesign and other categories like strategic sourcing, facilities management, or revenue enhancement opportunities. We are committing to finding $75 million in administrative efficiencies over four years. And that next year's number, we would build on, an additional $14 million on top of the administrative efficiencies that we have found over the last two years. On page 20, we begin the discussion on the predictable tuition policy. And before I get into what we are recommending for predictable tuition policy going forward, let me talk a little bit about the predictable tuition policy that was enacted in 2011 and what we've learned in the five years since then. So fiscal year 2016 was the last year of those approved tuition increases. In 2011, the state authorized CUNY and SUNY to have tuition increases of up to $300 per year. And so what did we do with that spending? Well, we made programmatic investments at our colleges of $263 million over that time period. And I really want to recognize our college presidents for the really good and strategic investments that they made over that time period. $263 million of programmatic investments. That was not $263 million that went to plug funding shortfalls. That was $263 million of new money that went to further our campuses, further the experiences of our students, $183 million at the senior colleges, $80 million at the community colleges. The largest component of that investment was $75 million that was provided in financial aid. Second biggest was $73 million that was invested in hiring additional full-time faculty. We created almost 1,000 new faculty lines. 996 new faculty lines were created over that five-year time period. On page 21, we want to list what were the outcomes. So we made these really good strategic investments over those five years. Did they have a positive benefit? And the answer is a resounding yes. When you look at all of the criteria that one would look at to measure a higher education institution, all of them are trending in a positive direction. Graduation rates for baccalaureate freshmen are up. Graduation rates for associate freshmen also have increased. We've granted 22% more degrees and certificates, almost 48,000 more degrees and certificates than we did six years earlier. When the predictable tuition policy was enacted in 2011, many people said it's going to result in a decline in enrollment. The opposite happens. We've had a 5% increase in enrollment over that time period, adding almost 13,000 new students. Academic momentum for baccalaureate freshmen has increased, which is a good measure of success for students. And that last point, I think is a tremendous data point to keep in mind. The transfer rate for associate graduates into baccalaureate programs rose from a little over 60% to almost 75% over the last six years. So campuses have made good investments, and they resulted in positive outcomes with the tuition revenue that was generated over the last five years. So now, page 22. This bar chart, I think, is one of the best that I've seen in terms of explaining why the predictable tuition policy is so effective. And this is a history of the last 30 years of senior college tuition increases at the City University, 1987 to 2016. And I want to focus specifically on the 20-year period from 1991 to 2010. The blue bars show the changes in tuition for each of those years. The red bars show the changes in state aid support to our senior colleges. So from 1991 to 2010, you can see that tuition increased in six of those years. You see the blue bars went up in six of those 20 years. So you might look at that, and your first reaction might be, that's pretty good, that tuition only went up six years out of the 20. However, when you look at those increases, look how large some of those increases were. Three of those years, tuition went up by over 30%. If tuition went up by over 30% this year, that would be a well-over $2,000 increase for our students this year. Another year, it went up by 25% in 2004. 2010, it went up by 15%. These were really large increases that resulted, quite frankly, in sticker shock for a lot of our students when these increases were implemented. So that was a bad thing. The other thing that I want to point out that was, that made it a double whammy for our students is, look at the red bars in each of those six years that tuition went up. And every single one of those six years when tuition went up from 1991 to 2010, every single year, state aid to our senior colleges went down. And so what that resulted in is, not $1 of those tuition increases, those very large tuition increases that happened over the six years, not $1 went for additional investment in our campuses. Our students didn't get the benefit of any of those additional tuition money that they were paying because they all went to plug budget shortfalls. So now, let me point you to the right side of the page. The governor and the legislature agreed to implement the predictable tuition policy in 2011. And look what happened. On the right side of the page, you see, yes, tuition did go up every year, but they went up by modest amounts, well less than 10% every year. And state aid went up every year. So all of the money that we generated were able to go for investments, that $263 million that I talked about earlier. So the predictable tuition policy works. It helps our students and their families plan for their time here at CUNY because they know what the tuition increases will be. And it also helps leverage additional state support. So we call on the extension of the predictable tuition policy, and we assure the trustees that we'll continue to make good investments with these funds. On page 23, another bar chart that just shows the comparison of senior college tuition On page 23, another bar chart that just shows the comparison of senior college tuition to SUNY and to the other private colleges here in the New York area. We're very close to SUNY, we're shade above, shade below them, I should say, $140 per student at $6,330 this year. And you can see, we're well below the private colleges here in the metropolitan area. So, page 24. What are we recommending for the Predictable Tuition Policy? Well, we're recommending an extension, but a more modest tuition plan through 2021. So, we're asking for a four-year extension as opposed to a five-year extension because we want to tie it directly into our new and approved master plan. And we're calling that the increases be capped at $250 per year rather than $300 a year in response to the call that we've heard from our students to try to keep CUNY as affordable as possible. So, we're asking for $250 a year at the senior colleges for the next four years. At the community colleges, we're asking for that increase to be $100 per year. In general, our community college students have more of a financial need than our senior college students. And we are prepared for the second straight year to freeze community college tuition for next academic year if our funding requests that are included in this document are met through other sources. Page 25. Ensuring the CUNY Value. Again, I just want to assure all of you how seriously we take tuition increases here at this university. And just point out that two-thirds of our full-time undergraduate students, because of Pell and because of the TAP program here in New York State, attend tuition-free. Eight out of 10 graduate debt-free. And you can see that we administered almost $600 million in Pell grants and over $300 million in TAP awards in last academic year. So, we continue to have robust financial aid administration for our students. Page 26 shows the funding sources for the university operating budget for the current year by both percentage and by FTE on the right-hand side of the page. And you can see what we've done on the left-hand side of those pie charts is to break out the tuition component by how much is paid by undergraduate students, by graduate students, how much is supported by federal financial aid, how much is supported by scholarships and waivers. And you can see the state number on the right-hand side includes the amount that is provided by the state for TAP for our students. And so, of our total university budget, our operating budget in 2017, 16% of that is coming from undergraduate students, 6% from graduate students. If you look on the next page, page 27, you see what our proposed fiscal '18 budget request would be for those same funding shares. And you can see that even with tuition increases being assumed in our budget request, that the percent that would come from undergraduate students and graduate students would remain flat at 16% of the undergraduate, 6% of the graduate. So, 22% of our overall budget would come from out-of-pocket student payments. Page 28 has a summary of what the 2018 request would be by our three main funding sources, state, city, and tuition, and shows what those funds would be used for. And again, I'd like to point out the row about a third of the way down the page, total proposed percent changes, that the percent that would go up for tuition in terms of the overall tuition funding would only be 2.3%, which would be the smallest increase among the three major funding sources. So, next steps. If the, if this budget proposal is approved by the board tonight, we will share it with the State Division of Budget and the City Office of Management and Budget. It's very important for us to get our request out as quickly as possible to our funding partners at the state and city. The governor will be introducing his state executive budget in January 2017. And the mayor will also be introducing his preliminary budget for 2018 in January 2017 as well. So, that concludes my report. And again, as I said, I'm happy to take any questions or answer concerns. Before I do so, I'd just like to take a minute to recognize our university budget director, Kathy Abada, and her team on the great work they did in putting this request together. And I also want to reiterate what Vice Chair Schwartz said earlier. And I want to thank all the committee members of the Board of Trustees Finance Committee for two really helpful meetings that we had this, earlier this month. They were really terrific discussions. And the, also, the talks that we had individually in between those meetings were extremely helpful to us and to my team. And so, very grateful for the good counsel of the fiscal committee. So, with that, that concludes my report.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is a, in my view, a very thoughtful, forward-looking budget as the chancellor has mentioned and as Senior Vice Chancellor Sapienza has mentioned. I will say to my colleagues on the board, not only the substance of what you just heard from Senior Vice Chancellor Sapienza, but the actual presentation, how some of this is presented to you, was very much influenced by the discussions and the give-and-take that we had at the committee. So, having said all that, the resolution is in front of you. It is our calendar item number 3B. And I will move the approval and adoption of calendar item number 3B, Mr. Chair.
Second. There is, is there any further discussion on this item?
Yes.
Chica.
Thank you, Chairperson Thompson. In order to correctly and accurately highlight the concerns of our students and their voice, I will be submitting and reading a written testimony for the record. I would like to begin my comments on the budget proposal by thanking Chancellor Milliken for his leadership and his vision. I think we're all impressed with the initiatives outlined in the master plan, and I think that aligning our budget requests with the four-year CUNY master plan gives us all a clear understanding of what the future holds for our university. I would also like to thank Senior Vice Chancellor Sapienza for putting this budget request together. He has worked very closely with the student leadership to get our feedback, and we are grateful to have him during this process. The budget request before us calls for great investments into crucial programmatic initiatives that will allow the university to continue to provide high-quality service in support of our statutory mission and our commitment to all New Yorkers. Particularly, the Bridge to Completion Initiative would provide much-needed financial support to students who are within 30 credits of graduation and need additional financial aid to get to the finish line. And, the expansion of the ASAP program also serves as an important tool in helping our students to graduate on time. I think we can all agree that we need to continue to invest in the programs that make CUNY unique and serve our outstanding faculty and our students. There is one component of this proposal that I cannot in good conscience support, and that is the tuition increases, which is why I will be voting no on this calendar item. The budget request relies on tuition hikes and supports the extension of the Rational Tuition Plan that will effectively continue to raise tuition at the rate of up to $250 at the CUNY senior colleges and $100 per year at the community colleges. We cannot simply look at these proposed $100 and $250 annual tuition increases in isolation. We have to consider these proposed tuition hikes in the context of a larger national discussion on the need for investment in higher education and the historical backdrop in which these discussions are taking place. Historically, CUNY has served as a beacon of hope for New Yorkers aiming to achieve the American dream. What we have witnessed in the past four decades is that our legislators are serving our students a steady diet of budget cuts and tuition increases. The question that we have to ask ourselves as trustees of this great university is, when is this enough? When can we reasonably say that students have paid their fair share? And when do we say to our legislators that our students, our faculties, and our administrators are hurting? And as elected representatives of this city and this state, what can you do to help them? I think if we pose these questions, we would be surprised by the support and the gratitude we would receive. The discussion on the national level has taken a turn when it comes to public higher education. Recently, we heard President Obama make the case for free community colleges. We have also heard our presidential candidates speak on the rising student debt crises in this country. Hillary Clinton's proposal prioritizes the need for affordable in-state tuition for working class people. With all those things in mind, it is unclear why CUNY would be taking steps to contradict this national conversation. We have an opportunity here as New Yorkers to take the lead. We can create an environment where opportunity is within the horizon for our citizens. Last week, at the public hearing, Jamelle Henderson, a three-time CUNY graduate who attended BMCC, Brooklyn College, and Brute College, delivered a powerful and a moving testimony for which I took a quote that I wanted to share with you. And I quote, he says, "I am asking you all to look at us as your children. You ought to be very proud that we are here in this university system that is designed to provide us with the best education in the world. At the same time, however, you should be concerned that the cost of living in New York City is beyond out of control. Our neighborhoods that we are living in are being heavily gentrified, thus making it difficult to make a way while working hard each and every semester to get the best grades to make you all proud. Your CUNY children are hurting. We are struggling, and some of us have hit rock bottom, and yet, despite all these things, we still believe in the great education that this university provides." End quote. I am asking the board to appeal to the governor and the state legislators to take the lead on the needed investments in our university. It's not that we simply don't support tuition increases, but it's rather that it's not fear to our students because they cannot afford it. CUNY is one of the few institutions that is able to provide marginalized students with an opportunity to achieve the American dream. It is of the utmost importance that we call on the city and state to invest in this wonderful machine, which produces tax-paying citizens that are at the core of a vibrant economy. Thank you.
Thank you for those thoughtful comments.
I would like, I would like in many ways to support the student trustee, not on everything, but let me talk about the community colleges. I think that the national move is to have community colleges as an open door for free tuition. And I think if we, if we increase the tuition now, we are sending a signal that the national conversation is not a real conversation about community colleges. And for that, I abstained in our meeting as Fiscal Affairs and would like to abstain again until we explore every opportunity to be able to find out whether in fact we can have the community colleges freeze till now and no increases until we are able to explore what is going to happen in community colleges.
Thank you, Trustee Clark. Trustee Conway.
The faculty appreciates the inclusion in the budget of funds for reduction in the teaching load. As Vice Chancellor Sapienza noted, it will enable us to spend more time on advisement, mentoring, research, and scholarship, all of which benefit our students. We also cannot stress enough the importance of continuing to hire faculty in a higher education environment that has become so reliant on contingent faculty, and here at CUNY, where roughly half of our courses are taught by contingent faculty. We are also appreciative of a budget submission that aims to maintain the student contribution at no more than 25% of the total budget. However, we are also cognizant that any tuition increase will burden some of our students, particularly those who attend part-time because they need to work to support themselves and their families. We look forward to continuing discussions with the administration and the university student senate to develop programs and policies to provide resources to those students who need it the most. Thank you.
Are there other comments? Other trustee comments? There is a motion that's been put forward and has been seconded. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved. And again, let me thank everyone for their thoughtful comments. And let me also express my thanks to the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Great work. And I know it wasn't easy and took a lot of time. We greatly appreciate that help and support. Thank you so much. Let's see.
One last thing, one last thing. Following our vote approving the proposed budget resolution, which you've just approved, we went into an executive session for an update on the CUNY investment pool. With no more items on our agenda that evening, we adjourned, and that's the extent of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Let's see. Item number four. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration, let, and Administration, let me call on Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration Chair Fernando Ferreira to present the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, the committee took up the following at its meeting on October 5th. Item 4A updates the governance plan of the Graduate School and University Center to clarify that changes to a degree's programs, a degree program's governance must be considered after timely notification to a program's faculty and students of the proposed changes. Item 4B authorizes the chancellor to appoint Gary Johnson as the Commissioner of the CUNY Civil Service System for a prorated six-year term commencing October 6, 2016, expiring May 31, 2022. He replaces Marilyn Flood, who has resigned after serving as commissioner since 1994. Mr. Johnson's appointment will enable the university to continue to operate under the rules and regulations of the Civil Service Commission as approved by the New York State Education Law and governed by state civil service law. Calendar items 4C and 4D are naming opportunities to colleges which I will present together. I'm pleased to report that these namings reflect monetary gifts to the university of nearly $3 million. They are the Skirball Science Learning Center at Hunter College and the James N. and Kathleen D. Stone Center on Socioeconomic Inequality at the Graduate Center. The committee recommends approval of these items, and I move them.
There has been a motion that's made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items, items 4A through 4D? Hearing none. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion, items 4A through 4D are approved. Trustee Ferreira, do you have anything further to report?
I'd like now to share with the board a brief summary. It's brief only relative to the length of time our meeting took. The first of what will be quarterly reports to the Committee on Diversity and Inclusion at CUNY, prepared by Vice Chancellor Waters' office. As required by the Office of Federal Contract Compliance Programs, the university collects and reports data on the diversity of our workforce on an annual basis. CUNY offers each job candidate and new hire the option to self-identify. It also is required to periodically canvass the existing employee population and ask them to voluntarily provide information regarding their ethnicity, gender, if they're a veteran or disabled. The information forms the database for our reporting. CUNY's affirmative action reports are based upon groupings of similar job functions that are typical for higher education. Managerial, executive managerial group, faculty group, secretarial clerical group, service and maintenance workers, and so on. The objective of the affirmative action plan is to achieve representation commensurate with labor market availability. It also includes narrative information about the progress being made on the campuses and kinds of recruitment efforts that occur there. The committee indicated its desire to further examine CUNY's workforce representation with regard to current labor market availability. This will be a subject of a future meeting. We will include a deep dive into faculty diversity, qualitative assessments of the culture, climate, and programmatic efforts occurring at CUNY in January. And I look forward to forwarding those findings to the board. And that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ferreira. Item number five, the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Let me call on the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management Vice Chair Sandra Wilken to present the following items.
For the first committee on, committee on facilities planning and management, considering two items at its meeting of October 5, 2016. Following discussion and consideration of these items, Vice Chancellor Wilken gave a presentation on the calendar budget request for the book of common law, early resolutions listed in the work of the meeting, this calendar items, five at 8 through 5. Five at the Bronx Community College Execution Lease Renewal for 6016, Baghdad Avenue, Bronx New York. This would authorize a lease renewal for three years, 10 months, beginning December 1, 2016, expiring September 29, 2020, for the Bronx Educational Opportunity Center. Five, City University of New York, five-year capital budget request, five-year fiscal year 2017 through 18, through fiscal year 2021, through fiscal year 2022. year 2017 through 18, through fiscal year 2021, through fiscal year 2022. Every year, the university is required to submit a five-year capital plan to the State Division of Budget and the City Office of Management and Budget. As in previous plans, the fiscal year 2017, 18 through 21, 22, request focuses on completion of existing projects in critical health, safety code, safety code compliance, and rehabilitation projects. I would like to ask Vice Chancellor Bertrill to give us an overview of the capital budget request before we take any action.
Good evening. Everyone has a presentation? Unfortunately, I don't get to call on the chancellor.
I think that's a good old.
Just bear with me, I'd like to give a little bit of a background for the trustees of New York for the first time. So on page two, it describes the sources for our capital funding. The senior colleges are funded 100% by the state. The community colleges get 50% of their funding from the city and 50% from the state. City elected officials also make a small amount of funding for CUNY and its new colleges. Also, we receive some private funding for our capital projects. These funds come from private partnerships that resulted in gaining facilities like the dorms at City, Queens, CSI, and other facilities. The next page, the next page describes the status of funding. CUNY has over $3 billion in available state-funded funding for big project. This seems like a lot of money, but most of these funds are in active projects. We have over 300 active capital projects underway across all the campuses, both state of good repair and new facilities. We also have funding to advance many projects, mostly state of good repair. However, many of our planned new buildings that are in design don't have enough funding to go into construction. Lastly, we have such a large portfolio of old buildings that we will always need funds to continually update them. The next page, this is a really interesting chart. This is a summary of our 5-year capital request going back 10 years. You can see that 10 years ago, we were requesting $3 billion. Last year, we requested 6.8. The next, so the first year is what our need is, and our need is really very big and probably will remain at that level. However, the next line is a summary of the state funding received by year. We've gotten $4.8 billion over the last 10 years. And if you look at fiscal 2008, 2009, that was the big year, and it's the outlier, it's 1.8 billion. The 1.8 billion is the money that we used over the last few years to build all the new buildings that we've built. That's seven or eight of them. Since then, we've been receiving an average of $250 to $300 million a year. The bottom row is our actual spending by year. A few years back, at the peak of our construction program, we were spending $600 million a year. Now it's on the order of 400. So that kind of gives you the picture. Our need is really great, but we've gotten a considerable amount from the state of 4.8 billion dollars. The next page tells you how we establish the capital request. The president sitting here are very familiar with this. This process not only gives us the request, but it allows us to track all our projects. Some are phased and some are partially funded, and this request creates a consistent message of the need for the university. The process takes six months. We start after the budget bill in April. We meet with every single school. We go back and forth. We talk about projects that we are working on and develop priorities. Over the summer, we refine what we need, and before the plan reaches the trustees in the fall, every president in this room has signed off on what the priorities are. The next page gives you, defines what the priorities are per the Board of Trustees' goals. It's state of good repair, completing ongoing partially funded projects like the Brew College Field House and the Bronx Community College Utilities Upgrade. We continue to ask for funds for our new buildings at Brooklyn, I don't want to leave any out, Hunter, York, Hosto, CSI, upgrading technology and energy conservation, as well as 2020. So here's what the request is at the very upper level. Seniors, $6.8 billion request, 5.1 for senior colleges, 5.9 for the state share. The priorities in the first year are $1.2 billion, and we're also requesting $95 million in city discretionary funds from the city council and the borough presidents. Page eight. Now, if you would ask me how you get the best picture of what the priorities are, I would basically tell you, this is just for the presidents, this is just a sample, I didn't select one campus over another, it just shows you the detail. This document, it's six pages long, it's on the CUNY website, it gives you a list of every single project in priority order discussed with the campuses. It gives you what our request is for the next five years. So if you want to know what's going on in any specific campus, this is the document. This document then gets turned into a book that looks like this, that gives you a lot more description. But if you want a picture of what our request is, it's six pages long and it's on the website. The next page, here is the 6.8 billion, five-year need by year. The first year need is 1.3 billion. The next page is something that we have, we have not done, this is the first year that we've done this, because in discussions with DOB, which we have started, they basically asked us for what our priorities are, so we can have a discussion and a give-and-take back and forth. The request is 600 million for critical maintenance, and where we got that number from was the average, I described the average as somewhere between 300 and 250 and 300. We think that we need 400 every year just to tread water, and this is making up for the, the years that we didn't get that amount. The strategic initiatives are all the buildings that are in design and that need additional money. The community college money, it's, it's important to understand that we're asking for 80 million because that's what the city gave us. So that number is always what the city gave us, and we get a match. The strategic initiative is the same thing for the community college, these are for buildings that we need additional money to build. So the total is 1.1 billion. Now, these two are included, just to give you a picture of how long it takes to get enough funding to build a building, and I think it's really interesting. I chose, Jeremy, I put this together before you made your announcement. But if you think about this, it started in 1993, and Jeremy wasn't there, but when Jeremy started, I think the buildings that existed was Harren Hall, which was an old high school, and a factory, and that's basically what John Jay was. Now John Jay has this magnificent new building, and along with a magnificent program and a reputation, but you can, you can see that it takes a really long time, but it actually happens because we have built eight new buildings in the last nine years. And the other one that, I put in a community college one, Bronx North Hall, it took the same amount of time. It just takes a long time because this is a considerable amount of money. So this kind of gives you a picture of how long it takes and what the steps are and what the involvement is. So that is the end of the presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Are there any questions?
I presume that every trustee has been informed that this document exists on our website and may be consulted by all of us.
Yes.
And it's there also for the public to be able to review?
It's for the public, and it basically morphs into this, which is a description of every single project, but it's available for everybody to see.
Then, Mr. Chair, the committee recommends the approval and adoption of 5A and 5B items.
There's some motions been made. Do I have a second? All right, any further discussion on items 5A and 5B? Does it have a vote on the item? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, items 5A and 5B have been approved. Trustee Wilkens, do you have anything further to report?
No, this will conclude the report of the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. There being no further business, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. I asked for a motion to adjourn this meeting and go into executive session. A second?
Aye.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session. Thank you all.